September the third, twenty twenty four. Um, roll call please.
Good evening. This is the roll call for September third, twenty twenty four's work session. Mayor Butler. Let the record reflect, Mayor Butler is not in attendance. Councilmember James.
Present.
Councilmember Anton.
Everybody.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Present.
Councilmember Akins Wells.
Here.
Councilmember Mears.
Here.
Mayor Protem Akins Wells, you have a call.
Thank you. Okay. First item, adoption of the consent agenda. Uh, with any additions and deletions?
Mayor Protem Akins Wells, I do have some additions to the consent agenda if it is a pleasure of this body. Um, the first item that I would like to add to consent would be. My apologies, I can't see. The first item would be item number twelve, and that is a standard procurement. Um, unless there is any discussion by council, that's just a standard procurement item. Procurement reminded us this morning that this item can go on consent. That will be item number twelve under new business. The other item would be item number thirteen, item number fourteen, and item number fifteen. All of them are standard procurements as it relates to the sidewalk improvements. The amounts are within the purview of the city manager. We just needed this for record purposes.
I agree, sir.
And.
My apologies. And then the final one would be item number.
Eighteen and seventeen.
Sixteen and seventeen. No, I, I don't see. My agenda shows that easement is item number fifteen.
I, I have a question, Madam Protem.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the item says on the consent agenda, um, I'm speaking in particular about the, uh, the purchase of. Where is it? Wait a minute.
Just to clarify, Mayor Protem, the agenda that I am referencing is the agenda that was posted. And so I want to make certain, I think there was a revised agenda passed out. So we're talking about the numbering convention. I'm looking at the actual agenda that was published. I think there's a revised agenda that has been passed out to you, but based upon state law, we can't, we have to amend the agenda once posted in the meeting.
Okay. Uh, so the, the purchase of the lawn equipment, are we able to ask questions prior to voting on the, uh, consent agenda or you have to remove it off the consent agenda in order to ask questions?
If there's going to be discussion, it shouldn't be on the consent agenda.
Okay. So Madam Protem, I would like to have, um, item number two, the purchase of lawn equipment. I have a question about that, so I would like to have that removed from the consent agenda.
Okay.
Would you like me to re-found them just, just so that?
Please.
So the first one is, um, for item number two, um, Mayor Protem, as Councilwoman, what, Councilwoman James has requested discussion, this item will be moved to new business. And subsequent to that, we are adding items twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen respectfully to the consent agenda.
And sixteen and seventeen?
Sixteen and seventeen. Sixteen is Minister's Association Day of Prayer, and seventeen is the sixth annual youth empowerment summit. I think what would be easier for us is if nobody uses the revised agenda that has been sent out. I think it's easier to use the agenda in the book.
The revised agenda is in their books and on the diocese, and it's also uploaded on the website.
So I'm not sure what sixteen and seventeen you're saying.
Yeah, it's Minister's Association Day of Prayer. Um, and, and, and I'm sorry, not seventeen, just sixteen, but the, I would, the minister's day of prayer, I think that we can consent to that.
The only reason we didn't add this item to the consent agenda was because as we do with these fee waivers, we have conditions that we want to impose the actual request.
Okay.
Right. The consent agenda is as follows. Item number one, council discussion on a blanket purchase order for Bennett Fire Products. So item number two will now be item number three. Uh, council discussion on the upgrade of the agenda software system. Software system Civic Plus Executive Offices, and I won't, if it's okay, um, read the background and do y'all need that?
No.
You don't have to, but.
No.
Okay.
Up to you, Madam.
All right.
We got it before us.
Uh, item number three, council discussion on the purchase of two vehicles for senior services and maintenance division. Item number four, thank you. Consent, this consent discussion on the second street park basketball court resurfacing contract. Item number five, council discussion on Department of Planning and Community Development, Developments surplus office furniture. Item number six, council discussion of a temporary easement for sidewalk improves improvements at seven ninety Lindaway for a spark Georgia. Item number seven, council discussion and approval of a temporary easement for sidewalk improvements at fifty one eighty five Ellen Street.
Madam Mayor Protem, I'll make a motion that we approve as read.
All in favor? All right. So there is the work session of the September third. Twenty twenty four. So we, do we have an executive session? Okay. My apologies, you guys. I'm not the mayor. Um, this is her thing. Um, adoption of the consent agenda with any add additions and or deletions.
I think you just carried the motion for the consent agenda from the adoption of the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Adoption of the agenda. I'm sorry.
And for that, Mayor Protem, we just have one item we want to remove, and that is the point system policy for Public Works employees. And we'll request some additional conversation interdepartmentally for that particular policy in our HR team. And so we'd just like to strike it from the agenda, and there are no more changes.
And that's item number eight.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion, Madam, um, Protem, that we accept the, um, agenda um, with all the items that were removed for the consent agenda and the one item that was removed at the request of the city manager.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Approval of minutes. Council's approval of council. Oh, Lord, there's so many papers up here. I'm sorry. Getting them mixed up with the work session.
You got it.
Okay. New business. Council discussion on conveyance of property at five one one seven Springdale Drive. Item five, council discussion on GMA pension plan agreement and adoption of ordinance. Yeah. So now I need to read it. Oh, Lord. Okay.
You don't have to read it. We, we're just gonna have discussion.
Okay. End of discussion.
Yeah. So one of the things we want to clarify, the address of record for this particular item should have been enumerated as.
Fifty one twenty three.
Fifty one twenty three Springdale Drive. This is property owned by the Clayton County Land Bank Authority. Um, as many of you are aware, the Clayton County Public School District is looking to do a renovation of the historic Fountain High School. And so in order to ensure access on both sides, not just, um, the road directly in front of the school, but also on the Springdale side, they need this property for egress and ingress, and it's currently under, um, the ownership of Clayton County Land Bank Authority. I'm sorry, City of Forest Park.
Council discussion on GMA pension plan agreement and adoption of ordinance. Any discussion?
So again, Mayor Protem, this item here tonight is just a general revision. Um, that was made to the plan, and it was exactly what we talked about in the minutes. But when we look back at the actual resolution, um, or the ordinance that was presented by GMA, it did not have immediate vesting for department head. So we fixed those things, or GMA fixed it. Um, and based upon their legal department, we had to re-adopt the entire ordinance as presented tonight.
Thank you.
So. Question, you taking questions?
Any discussion, I'm sorry, questions?
Thank you. Um, so with the revision, um, Mr. Clark, is there anything substantial from, from what we had before?
No, it's nothing substantial. In fact, when I presented the item, I presented it as it is tonight. Um, based upon the synopsis and the summary that we provided to all of you, um, the only change was in the actual plan documented. It did not mention, I mean, immediate vesting for departments, but we had already shared that. Um, when we did the submission of the plan, as well as GMA shared it when they came that night. But nothing substantial outside of what we've already presented, unless Attorney MetroCardi has some additional changes. Okay.
Thank you.
So you wrote, you did the, the item number. Okay. Item number six, council discussion and approval of a temporary easement of sidewalk improvements at five fifty one eighty five Ellen Street. Any discussion?
Um, again, this is an item for a sidewalk project that we have here in the city. Um, and we're just seeking to convey the property so that we can get the sidewalk built out. I'm not sure if Public Works has any additional, um, information that they wish to provide on this item, but that's the gist of it.
I'm sorry, what, what item number was that?
I think that was one that you may have removed, but basically it's, uh, given us permission to enter the property to repair and replace all the sidewalks and upgrade all the driveways. And when we leave, we leave it the way it was before.
Thank you, Mr. D.
Any question?
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm trying to find where that item is.
That's what we're trying to figure out too, Councilwoman James.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So let me explain. I think this will make it easier. Um, so. Item number one on the new business was the Springdale property, which we talked about. Item number two was the GMA plan in which we just discussed. Item number three, which would have been the temporary easement, was moved to the consent agenda. I'm sorry. Item number three would be the citywide discussion, um, operations and performance audit. And I'm, if you'll give me a second, I'm gonna re-number these for Mayor Protem.
Okay. Item number three, uh, council discussion on the citywide operations and performance audit. Any question, discussion?
Okay. This item here, Mayor Protem.
I'm sorry, point of order. Um, what was the item before? I'm sorry.
The item preceding that was the GMA pension plan agreement, and then the fall immediately after that, that's the, the citywide operations. It was number seven on the work session.
So what I was doing was looking at the work session previously. It's too much with this consent agenda, I get confused, so forgive me.
Okay. So item number one was fifty one seventeen Springdale.
Which is now fifty one twenty three.
Okay. And then item number two was a GMA pension. That was what we just discussed. Okay. Then item number three.
Council discussion on citywide operations and performance audit.
Okay, got you. I'm with you.
Any other questions or discussion?
For governing body members, this item is what we presented in the strategic planning retreat. Now what we're seeking is formal adoption of the operational audit. Again, you'll, you'll recall that this was, this audit was performed and approved by this governing body just to update the initial audit that was done in two thousand and twenty one. Um, one of the things that we're trying to do is ensure that we align our strategic operations with the policy lens provided by this governing body, as well as, as we focus on one forest park, ensuring that the key performance indicators that have been presented for each department, the ones that were there, as well as the ones that we added with the additional KPI of employee culture, ensure that all of that information is on record and adopted by this governing body. There have been no substantive changes since we held our strategic planning retreat, so we're just, we're just seeking approval of this document. The KPIs will be reported externally, um, during a monthly cadence beginning for the month of October two thousand and twenty four.
Okay. Item number four, council discussion and approval regarding Croft and Associates fee proposal to provide architectural renderings and three D animation services for Star Park Phase One. Any questions or discussion, city manager?
Governing body members, as you know, as we've done with our other projects, um, we've provided a three D conceptual rendering. Mr. Shelby was not able to be here on tonight, but we're seeking to do the same as we finalize the plans for Star Park. Um, I know it's in work too, and I know Councilman Gutierrez has had some questions from constituents. I know it's in war too, and I know Councilman Gutierrez has had some questions from constituents as to where we are in that process. But as you know, Star Park was bid out, I'm assuming it was two years ago, and the bids came back much higher than anticipated. I want to say it came back around twenty million dollars. And so what we've tried to do is go in and refine what those plans actually were. Take it line item by line item to do value engineering so that we're still able to deliver a quality park in this community, but get it done in tandem with the work that we're doing on the city center.
Yes, ma'am.
So after the three D renderings are done, is that when the process of bidding it out goes? Is that when we bid it out?
We'll do them simultaneously. What we're working on finalizing right now are the construction drawings for the actual project, but you'll actually have the three D rendering prior to the bid going out so that everyone is able to see the final look of the actual part. Similar to the city center, we have the city center three D renderings right now, but the bids are not due until the end or mid September.
So when you say it's going out simultaneously, the, the people that are bidding, they're gonna be able to bid on something they can't see?
So a three D, a three D rendering is more for us than it is the contractor. The contractor will bid on the project by the construction drawing. And what they'll do is they'll go in based upon an itemized listing that our procurement department will provide, and they'll bid on each of those line items to come up with the total cost of the project. The three D conceptual allows us to be able to show the animation to your constituents, your stakeholders, et cetera. And we have them for all of our projects.
Got you, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So question, so once, once a contractor is awarded the bid, how long do they have to start and how long are we thinking for this project to be completed?
So Star Park, we are probably, I'm not sure if Director Maxwell is here. Yeah. Star Park, we are, I would say sixty percent there with the plans, as it relates to essentially what had happened was the entirety of Star Park was going to be redone. And financially, that doesn't make sense because it's already an existing park. And so what we're able to do is remove a lot of the old equipment, a lot of the old apparatus that's out there and essentially go back with some that are more makeshift. Some of the pavilions, instead of having them built ground up, we're able to purchase some like that, purchase those pavilions. But I would say we're sixty, seventy percent of the way there.
No, we're a little higher than that. We're pretty much eighty to ninety. We just have to do the final changing minor stuff to it that we made at the last one.
Okay, thank you. Item number five, council discussion on a six-month strategic plan and authority board's update. Any questions, discussion?
Governing body, this presentation will be handled by our Director of Economic Development, Director Marcellus Williams.
Right. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Mayor Pro Tem and Council and City Manager. This is a, you should have a packet, our six-month economic development strategic plan. This plan is just a, a guide for the economic development department in several different areas. Business retention, small, small business improvement, standard operation procedures, marketing, networking, and then a board update. So I'm glad to speak for you all, and so I'm gonna hop right into the presentation. So one of the big things for economic development is business retention. So we wanna get to know our businesses and the city wanna support our local businesses. And so we're, one of the big keys for us is doing our business retention walks. So we started that back in August, last month, we had a very successful one in Ward One. Thank you, Councilwoman James, for that and coming along with us. And so we want to continue to do that. We want to do two per month. And we want to make that, the goal is to visit ten businesses by January twenty twenty-five. But we want to continue to make this a permanent thing for economic development, visiting businesses in each council person's ward. And you know, the, the goal is to form partnerships and to support our local businesses because we wanna make sure that our businesses in the community expand and grow, and we want them to know that we're here to support them in any way possible. The next big item on the, on the strategic plan is marketing. So one of the things we, the goal is to increase awareness of Forest Park. Why is Forest Park a great place to invest in, to live, work, and play? So we, some of the actions that we're gonna take in the next six months are updating the economic development website, improving our film registry. That is the different locations in the city that you can film, create new marketing materials, which is already in the pipeline, we're already working to get that done. Create a business newsletter for our local businesses to give them updates on ribbon cuttings and other things going on, resources that we can provide so they can be informed and aware of what the economic development department can do to help them. And to use social media just to highlight our businesses, ribbon cuttings, and other things that we're doing as a department. And some of the metrics are visitors to the website, subscribers to the newsletter, and just engagement on social media as well. And the timeline for, we're planning to complete that by November twenty twenty-four, but we've already begun on several different items on that when it comes to marketing. Next slide. Yep, and this is just some photos of some of our visits, or my visits, to some of the local businesses. So I just wanted to, this first two months, I just wanted to get out there and to introduce myself to several different local businesses in the city and get to know them, get to know what their goals are and needs are. And so I think I received really good feedback from that. So the next item is just internal operations, so improving efficiency and effectiveness in our department. One of the things we really want to do is create a standard operation procedure manual for the economic development department. As you know, economic development is very robust, and there's a lot of different things that we're doing. So we need to keep track of those things. And so I'm doing a conductive, comprehensive review of the department and the plans and the different projects that we have developing KPIs. So obviously you know that we have KPIs that we talked about from our retreat back in July. But also, we have some internal KPIs. So how many developers or how many real estate brokers you've made contact with this month? How many businesses that we've assisted this month? Those are things we're keeping track of. And then a part of the, that metric too, is just more staff training. That's very important. Just so our staff can be trained, you know, Rochelle, she's doing an excellent job as our Main Street manager, but she wants to continue to get training and Main Street certification. So that's a big thing that we're gonna continue to push, just getting different training for our staff. And we hope to have those, those SOP standard operation procedures done by the end of twenty twenty-four for the city manager to review. The next item is small business improvement. It's great, and one of the great things about Forest Park is that we have a lot of great companies in our city. Kroger, HD Supply, Amazon, Boeing, Southwest Airlines, Senlis, EV Terra, Clorox, Georgia Power, to name a few. But we also are a home of many small businesses, and small businesses are the backbone of our city. And so we want to support the small businesses in our city. And some of the things that we're planning on doing is, like last week, we hosted a seminar with Clayton State Small Business Development Center to educate our businesses on how to get a business plan, a business license, business coaching. We thought that was very successful, we're gonna continue to do that. The other items that we plan on doing, as I mentioned earlier, was we're gonna create a business newsletter to inform our local businesses about resources that we have and can provide. And also just increase partnership in the Forest Park Business Association, which just helps our businesses network and get connected to each other. And finally, on this, when it comes to our strategic plan networking. So one of the things I get to do in my role is to tell people, evangelize how great Forest Park is. And so I've met with several real estate developers, I had a meeting today and have two, three more this week. Giving them tours of different properties that the city owns, giving tours of properties that the development authority owns, and just telling them about the opportunities that we have here and making people aware of how great of a place Forest Park is. And so some of the action items that we want to continue to do is attending networking events, reaching out to local real estate brokers, building our relationship with our local real estate community, giving tours, as I mentioned, of DDA, URA, and DA properties and city property. And the goal is to strengthen partnerships. Economic development is a team sport, so we want to strengthen our partnerships with our metro area, metro Atlanta area real estate community. So giving you authority board update. The downtown development authority, so we have a big project going on, Project Moonshot. That project is gonna be a six-acre mixed-use development, two hundred and seventy-five apartment units, twenty-two thousand square foot of retail. So we're working on the process with that. We're really excited about that project. Main Street events, so we have several Main Street events coming up, up early on Main is one. And then our big one is Blues on Main Street, which is gonna be October eleventh. So really, we've got some really good artists, and so we're excited about those, those artists and that event that's gonna be happening. Operation Unload, so that is a, essentially, marketing, essentially the properties that we do have to developers, meeting with real estate developers, telling them about the opportunities that we have in the city. And that's kind of a theme with all our boards because we have a lot of property to market and to, to, for development opportunities here in the city. The next board update would be the development authority, so we're redeveloping eight fifty Main Street. That's a nine thousand square foot building on Main Street, so we have some, we're in preliminary discussions about that right now. We're really excited about that project and what that will look like. Again, marketing the properties that the development authority has. The third update will be the Urban Redevelopment Agency Authority. We're doing, we had a successful URA strategic retreat in July, and out of that retreat, we're planning on working with TSW to do a master plan, just some things that the, some properties that the development authority is interested in and has. The URA has, excuse me, not development authority, excuse me for that. And expanding the boundaries of the URA as well. And so those are just some of the updates from our boards, and I will leave it open to questions now.
Any questions?
Yes, so first of all, thank you so much. And I would say, hopefully we get a copy of this presentation because we don't have it in our book, Mr. Clark.
I don't know how it was opened.
But.
It's in the package.
Say that again?
Yeah, and we just don't have it, and it would've been nice to have it. But I wanted to say to Director, it was a pleasure going with you to the two businesses and for the residents out there. As I stated, when I went on the tour of the two businesses that we were able to go to see, this is the first time since I've been a councilperson that was, I was invited to kind of see what the businesses are doing. Of course, I've done visited business on my own, but in this particular case, this one business is really a jewel here in Forest Park. It's called Senlis, I think it's.
Senlis.
Senlis, a lighting company. And I understand when I went there, I'm in the wrong business because he said they are way overpaid. But no, it's just, it just was an honor to see the businesses, see what they're doing, see how incredible the opportunity is here in the city of Forest Park and the types of businesses that we actually have. And then the other business that we were able to go see was like a recycling type company. Huge, and they, they shipped their recycling materials to another country. I forget the country it was going to.
South Korea.
Yeah, so that's a huge thing that's happening right here in the city of Forest Park. And so we do have some great, great businesses out there, and both companies were open to partnership and seeing what they can do to help our schools, help our city, help our community. So I'm excited about it. Thank you for your leadership in that area, and I'm just excited, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
No, I just want to piggyback off what Councilwoman James said. I think it's absolutely amazing that you come in, hit the ground running, and then get the council members involved in the businesses and their wars. So I just really appreciate you that, appreciate you, and can't wait till we get to Ward Four. And it also helps the community, the business community, get more involved and want to assist more and just be there more. So I really, really appreciate that, thank you.
I think to that point, Mayor Pro Tem, I think this month is Ward Two.
Correct.
We're doing with Councilman Anton for two businesses within his ward. We just gotta finalize the dates.
Correct.
I want to thank you for the presentation. I got a question. My Ward Five is basically homeowners. I don't have very few businesses to reach out to and whatever. Most of mine is a school or two and things. So how, how do you go about that in a ward that doesn't have a whole lot of business?
Well, that's a great question because I have thought about that when I looked at your map of your ward. And so that was a thing I was thinking about, you know, there are, there are opportunities for, you know, we have home businesses, so there might be an opportunity to set up a meeting with several home businesses because that, you know, people have home businesses all over the city, so that's a possibility too. Luckily, thanks you to our community development director, Director Dozier. I now have a list of all the businesses in the city, and so I can reach out to them and, you know, their addresses too, so we could set something up that way.
Well, most of mine, my end on the south end is little mom and pop stores, convenience stores. And I have one major grocery store and a barbershop, but really no whole lot of heavy industry.
Right, well, and you know, to that point, even though for Councilwoman James, we did visit bigger industries, it's still important, as I showed in the presentation, visiting mom and pops too. Because, you know, it's great, as I said, having the big names here, but you never know what small business could become a big name one day, so.
Thank you.
So much.
All right, thank you.
Item number six. Council discussion of the allocation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in tax allocate, in the tax allocation district funds to support the stormwater infrastructure, infrastructure needs for the proposed new townhome project on Main Street. Background and history, the proposed townhome project on Main Street is said to be, to be a significant addition to our community, providing modern housing options and contributing to the ongoing revitalization of the downtown area. However, due to the nature of the development site, substantial stormwater management requirements must be addressed to prevent potential flooding, manage runoff, and comply with the local and state government regulations. Given the complexity, complexity and costs associated with these stormwater needs, the project developers have requested assistance from the city to cover a portion of the infrastructure costs. After careful evaluation, it is recommended that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the TAD funds be allocated for this purpose.
Yes, ma'am, Mayor, Council, we, Mayor Pro Tem and Council, my apologies. We have the developer here tonight, and we have a short presentation for you. But as he's coming, the gist of this is, as you know, for a number of years, there's been dialogue relative to the erection of townhomes lining Main Street. There between, I believe it is Lake and Ash Streets. And so we've been working with the developer for several months to get this finally to a place where we're all comfortable. And so based upon all of the impending needs for stormwater, our request here tonight is for the allocation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of our TAD funds. And if, for those that don't know, your TAD funds are your tax allocation districts, we're requesting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the five hundred thousand dollars that it'll cost to build out this underwater retention system that the developer will use. We believe that this, this project is justified by several facts. The first one being, we believe this townhome project will drive further economic activity along Main Street. We believe it diversifies what our housing portfolio is in this community. We also believe that ensuring that we have adequate stormwater management is just critical to protecting that Main Street corridor. And last but certainly not least, just the entirety of the public benefit of the erection of these, I believe, thirty-three townhomes there on Main Street. So the developer is here from Cultivate Communities, Mayor Pro Tem, to go briefly through the slideshow of what this community can expect if these funds are approved.
Thank you very much. I'm Frank Bailey. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Frank Bailey with Cultivate Communities here this evening to discuss, as they've outlined, and just want to kind of give a brief overview of what's planned here. It's thirty-two units, as Mr. Clark mentioned. Between Lake and Ash Street, there, there are eight-unit buildings broken up into, into four buildings. The stormwater that we're referring to, the underground, will be on the eastern side in the, in building number four. Obviously, you wouldn't see it because it's, it's underground. Along the eastern side there, we have a pavilion planned with, with grills and picnic. and picnic tables and such along the eastern side. And then along the western side, we have a proposed dog park and parking, and all of which will be open to the public. The, the latest civil set just came out right before the holiday last week. So, it's just slight variation on the western side there. And we also have new quotes out due to that new civil set. So, we do believe that the costs are going to exceed our initial expectations. However, we're not asking for additional funds over than that, so. But it is going to be a significant expense. We're very excited about bringing this project to the community. We've been working really hard for quite some time. This is a rendering of one of the first buildings, one, two, or three. There will be some slight changes. This was an earlier rendering. But this gives you a general idea of what it would look like along Main Street there. You've got two floors above the below grade, so you have a rear, rear alley access coming into the rear. We had a single car tandem, two car garages originally planned. We're gonna shift that and it's gonna be two side-by-side garages. We've been able to work that out, so we'll be able to have cars to park side-by-side and not end-to-end as we originally thought. And some other slight changes to the facade as well, but it gives you the general idea. This is building four here. This is a true three-story product on building four, which will be a walk, you'll walk directly into the main living level from Main Street, and then having the bedrooms on the upstairs floors, as well as the garage on, on that floor as well. So, that gives you an idea there. Okay, here is along the western side, it's the, the proposed dog park there that you can see there. It will be slightly, it will be moved slightly, because there will be some cars parking now on that, on the Main Street side there as well, to allow for some additional parking. That gives you a good idea there. And I think we're missing, okay, sorry, it's not very clear there, but it gives you a good idea along the eastern side there. The planned pavilion there along Ash Street. Here again, there'll be picnic tables and pavilion there open for public use. But that gives you the general idea of what's planned there.
Mayor Protem, to follow up this conversation, one of the things, if this governing body is to approve this request, we would ask for there to be a time limit by in which the developer actually broke ground on this project. This is something that the community has been waiting on for quite some time. And I've been here a year, and we've been talking about this project from the year. And I feel if we're using funds out of this TAD money, we should have some certainty as to when the developer will not only break ground, but begin construction, because all of the preliminary plans for this project, I believe, have been approved already.
Correct.
The color schemes probably will alter some, but what the initial idea was to play off of some of the artful joy that we are looking to display within the downtown district, but that variation will change some.
Absolutely, another thing to consider, how it shows on the screen is not necessarily the color, but actually that it's, that's been, but the color chips we have, we've submitted those, and absolutely. Regarding timeline, you know, I've been working on this project for several years now as well. We're ready to get started. One of the major hurdles has been Clayton County Water Authority and getting that approved, right? And so, the timeline in that there, and so, we are very, very, very close. And if we're, you know, allowed these TAD funds and that approval, we feel that we'll be able to move along quickly.
And just to clean up the records, Clayton County Water Authority cares a lot about ensuring that the individuals in Clayton County have access to good and clean water. And so, they just want everybody to follow their guidelines, but they are an amazing partner.
Absolutely, no, that's, that's, that's absolutely true. Thank you for that clarification, absolutely.
Any more questions?
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Did, I'm glad to see you working closely with Clayton County Water, but is there any hiccups as far as the rainwater runoff or stuff like that? We've had several run-ins or discommunit, about the rainwater runoff. Or is that in there, y'all in cahoots with that? I mean, you.
Yes, sir.
Figured it out?
Yes, sir, that's absolutely taken into consideration, and that's part of the, the underground chamber system that were, has been designed.
Long as, long as y'all work together on that.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item seven, council discussion on Minister's Association's Day of Prayer for Creation and Leisure. Mr. Maxwell, you have anything for this item?
Good evening, how y'all doing?
Good.
Good evening.
Well, every year, the Minister's Association, they come and have their Day of Prayer. And this year will be held the third weekend of September, September the twenty-first, where they come in, they have some performances, prayer over the city, and other things pretty much going on within the world today. They're looking to use the amphitheater area at no cost and pretty much looking to get approval for that.
Any questions?
Mayor Protem staff would like to request, similar to the other fee waiver requests, that we add a condition that there be insurance listing the city of Forest Park as additionally insured. And I think that's been standard throughout all of these fee waivers, and that just covers us in case of any type of incident. And it's a million dollar aggregate.
Thank you. Well, the next one is for you too. Item eight, council discussion on the sixth annual youth empowerment summit.
Good evening. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's our discussion, I'm sorry.
As she stated, the, we're looking to have our sixth annual youth empowerment summit with, that we have in on, I think it's September the twenty-eighth, yes, at six nine six Main Street. It's right here, caters to young women. We have some powerful speakers that'll be coming in, pretty much teaching them about life, life services, things they be going through in life, and pretty much encouraging them to go different paths that they choose.
Thank you. Oh, and of course, Councilwoman James.
I was gonna say, just, just because we have a lot, a lot going on, on that day. And so, it's gonna be a lot of trying to divide the time between our young, young folks that's, that would like to participate in that. So, I would like us maybe in the future to kind of consider all of the activities that's happening on that day.
Yes, ma'am, that is top on our list. That seems to be a recurring thing that we as staff need to work on, Councilwoman James, in ensuring that whatever events are planned out by the governing body members do not conflict with events that are planned by staff, because it causes everybody heartburn, and it's just harder on staff. So, I'll check the dates to see what a potential conflict could look like, and we'll adjust accordingly. What event is this day, Ms. James? Is this date of the homecoming?
It's the homecoming and the tailgate and.
And the five K.
And the five K.
There's no way they can.
That makes, that makes no sense to, to combine all of that on one day. My fear is if you're having a five K, you have road closure, even if it's a rolling closure.
Well, the, the five K doesn't interfere with this right here. They're on totally two opposite sides of the city, and they don't clash with each other. The, the five K ends about tenish this, and the tailgate starts at three, and this is from ten to three.
So, I would ask, is, is staff, how stretched would staff be with this? Is staff really helping with this, or this is not something that staff would be?
Well, we do have a staff member on site for the, pretty much the event, but it's all facilitated out from someone else coming, facilitating the program.
Okay.
So, we outsource the speakers and the people that facilitate this outsource. We're just there to pretty much make sure they have the things they need.
So, is it your recommendation that we can proceed on with the date as, as planned?
Yes.
So, I have that same concern too, because I actually whispered to Mr. Clark, like, that's the day that I was, you know. But that's, being that it's not in stone, it's okay. But it would be good to know, like, and I thought we did this previously, like, to go over the calendar, like, have everyone's events on the calendar, so that these type of things don't happen. And I, I just don't think nobody else should be written apart when the councilperson or anybody is doing something in the park, like, the park should be off limits for that day, because hiccups can happen, things can happen. And it's, yeah, I just think we need to look into that a little more. It's good to have events and bringing the community together, but we can be a little more organized in this for rent and the facilities out, to make sure everyone is on the same page and aware of what's going on, so that we know how to plan. That's the only thing I have.
Councilwoman Mears?
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, is there a motion to adjourn the work session?
Madam, Mayor Protem, I just wanted to correct the record. I misstated before when I mentioned that the economic development presentation wasn't there, and I wanna make sure that I'm, I do correct the record. It is there, it was not in the format that he presented it, that's why I couldn't find it. But thank you, it is there.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is there a motion to adjourn the work session?
So moved. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Uh, we'll call to order the council work regular session of Tuesday, September third, twenty twenty-four. Roll call, please.
Yes, good evening. This is the roll call for the regular session of September third, twenty twenty-four. Mayor Butler. Let the record reflect Mayor Butler is not in attendance. Councilmember James.
Present.
Councilmember Anton.
Evening.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Present.
Councilmember Atkins Wells.
Here.
Councilmember Mears.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim, Atkins Wells, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I missed the invocation. If there is there anyone from the Ministers Association to cook? You please do the invocation for us. Thank you. Those able, please stand.
Amen, let us pray. Heavenly Father, we just come to you today first just saying thank you, Lord, for just another opportunity to God to be above ground. Father, we thankful, Lord, for the breath in our bodies. God, an even opportunity to gather together as a city of Forest Park, Father. We just ask your presence be with us during this meeting, Father. We ask for your wisdom. Lord, may your spirit guide us into all truth, God, and may we make decisions and choices, Father God, that will align us with your blessings. Father God, I pray just ahead of protection over our city. Continue to strengthen our first responders, God, and continue to strengthen all those who pass through this city, Father God. We want this place to be blessed. Want this place to be a place where people talk about for years to come. So, Father, I just thank you right now, Lord, and ask again that you lead us and guide us during this time in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
A pleasure.
To the United States of America and to the republic which stands a nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of the consent agenda with any additions and or deletions.
Mayor Pro Tim, we just have one.
Roll call. We did a roll call, we we did it before. Okay, okay, go ahead.
Well, first, I just have one change to the consent agenda. Um, based upon Councilwoman Jane's request, we'd just like to remove item number four, which is the purchase of lawn care equipment. We'd like to move it to item number ten, which in a subsequent motion will delete from the agenda. So we're just asking for the consent agenda to remove item number four from consent and we'll be taking it to new business.
So move.
A second.
All in favor? Adoption of the agenda with any additions or deletions.
Mayor Pro Tim, we just have one change. We would like to remove item number ten as central on the agenda, council approval and appoint system policy for public works employees. And we would like to then replace that with then item number four on the consent, council approval for the purchase of lawn care equipments.
So move.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Approval of minutes, item one. Council approval of council work session and regular meeting minutes from August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Madam Pro Tim, I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes regularly and work session minutes.
Is there a second?
My second.
All in favor? But the comments, we have one.
Mister Cook. Mayor Pro Tim, I'm sorry, may I please read the public comment?
Yeah.
The quorum and procedures, okay. Per the charge of section two dash one dash seven rules or procedures in the quorum. Comments will be limited to a total of three minutes per speaker. Twenty-one minutes are allotted in total. Members of the public are not allowed to participate in any debate or discussion conducted by the governing body members. Our public comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over which the governing body has jurisdiction. Each speaker must maintain a decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon members of the governing body or employees shouting and using obscene language. Our questions and comments shall be directed to the presiding officer and members of the governing body may respond to the comments during their closing comments if they desire.
Thank you, Mister Cook.
Good evening, council. I have just a few, uh, one question, a couple, um, remarks, I guess. Uh, the first question is in regards to the playground equipment. I know we were, uh, recently renovating different playgrounds around the city. And we're just curious to know if the old equipment, could it be donated to a, uh, nonprofit or five oh one C three? Um, if so, if there is old equipment or if it is possible, we'd like some more information on how we can go about, um, seeing about that or under, how we can get that, so to say, excuse me. Um, also, just two quick announcements. Um, I'm here representing the Rock Church of Atlanta tonight. We'll be celebrating twenty-two years of ministry, eleven of which have been here in, uh, Forest Park, Georgia, in Ward Two, uh, starting on Friday, the twenty-seventh, going all the way through Sunday, the twenty-ninth. I do want to highlight Friday, we call it our food feast. Uh, we have a, a, a program going now called, uh, sharing that we want to help meet the need to feed. Each week we greet about four hundred and fifty people right there in Forest Park, um, at the Rock Church. And we're looking for, uh, partnerships, uh, donations, of course, food, even if you, uh, or even volunteers to come out. Um, literally the line is wrapped down towards the, uh, building of the new middle school. And so, uh, it's a great opportunity to meet the people in the city, um, but also to to, uh, be a blessing to this community. So we lack some participation or help or, um, even volunteers. If you know anybody need community service or the people need food or people want to help donate food, we we take it all. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. City managers' report.
Yes, ma'am, mayor and council. I'll keep it brief on tonight. First, I'd like to introduce one of our new hires, which is actually a rehire.
Sorry.
Officer Eric Ellis.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. There were two public comments, um, Mister Samuel Ibanez. Sorry, Officer Edwards.
Ellis.
Ellis.
Oh, we're not ready for you.
One second, I'm sorry, Mister Ibanez. There were actually two public comments, sorry.
Ladies, everybody.
Yes, Stephen.
My name, my name is Samuel Ibanez. And wow, can see, um, something, somebody's missing one of my. If anybody can let me know after the meeting, you know, extending my, uh, healings, I guess he was virtual miss the mayor. Like to know when that was going on. And also, um, I've been asking for the roads for my bicycles workers for the longers. And I have had final results. Uh, I've been mentioning now also, because I asked that for the same petition in Atlanta and they actually they did it. But they did it like they take almost the whole street, so we didn't have the, uh, that's inconvenience to me because there is a lot of, uh, buses or cars that they cannot travel the streets. Now, uh, I'm thinking about we can put a line. It's Latricia. I've been thinking about we can put a line, a six inches of the inside the street. So we can put a, uh, orange line on the way that a it is a drawing on a bicycle wave that are people that can be visible. And my people don't get enough, a lot of tickets and being don't run over from the cars. And, you know, it's hard for us to work as we working on the shadows, on their pay. It's enough for us to keep, uh, these, I want to say racist ways. But, uh, we can put a little more input on to help each other. Thank you.
Thank you. City managers' report.
Yes, ma'am. Um, first off, for starters, I would like to introduce, um, rehire Officer Eric Ellis with the Forest Park Police Department. Mister Ellis worked with the city for a number of years and he he came back to greener pasture. Um, the other thing, just to update on our home program. Um, thirty-five of fifty-four percent of the sixty-five approved legacy residents have either completed the work or in process of arranging repair dates. Ten of our legacy residents have completed all program phases. Twenty-five legacy residents have provided necessary cost estimate for repairs. We're happy to say that we were able to onboard, um, some additional contractors just to streamline the process as well as expedite it. Um, of these sixty-five applicants that have been approved, eleven of them were Ward one, eight of them were Ward two, fifteen of them were Ward three, twenty-one of them were Ward four, ten of them were Ward five. Three of the applicants have withdrawn for either sale, um, home sale or relocation. Um, just to address some of the public comments as it relates to the playground equipments. Um, if representatives from the Ministers Association can get with Mister Nigel or Mister Jinx after the meeting, we are planning to surplus some of that equipment now that all of the new equipment is back in. Um, at the last council meeting, there was a comment relative to mosquitoes and the city of Forest Park historically spraying. Um, as of last Friday, that machinery has been completely fixed and the crews did go out last Friday to spray those respective areas. And finally, as it relates to the bicycle lanes in Forest Park, we are a little limited on some of our roads. Um, as it relates to bike lanes based upon the size of them and we can't place bike lanes on our major thoroughfares such as Forest Park and Jonesboro Road. But within the LCI plan, um, that was done, it does talk about the feasibility of some areas that may be deemed necessary or appropriate for the bike lanes. But we want to make certain that whatever we do with our long range planings, that we keep all of our residents safe and also not only diversified housing, but diversified ways of transporting around this community. That concludes my city manager's report for tonight.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, gee. Wow. I don't make it long.
No. Item two, public hearing number one for the recommended proposed military rate background in history. The city of Forest Park has tentatively adopted a two in twenty twenty-four military rate, which will require an increase in property tax by one point fifty-seven percent due to property taxes, property values increasing. Even though the city of Forest Park proposes to keep the military rate at sixteen point seventy-four meals, the increase in property values results in a property tax increase. The tentative increase will result in a military rate of sixteen point seventy-four meals, an increase of one point fifty-seven percent. Without this tentative increase, the military rate will be no more than two point six meals. The proposed tax increase for a home with a fair market value of one million dollar, one hundred thousand dollars is appro- approximately ten dollars and forty cents. Mr. Williams.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim and City Council.
How you doing?
Just want to, um, this, this particular, uh, segment here is, uh, for the twenty twenty-four military rate presentation. This is to, um, to have our military rate, um, updated for twenty twenty-four. Uh, we're going to this slide here about the city of Forest Park. Next slide, here's our mayor and Forest Park City Council. City manager and the executive cabinet, this is all the city manager, city manager Clark and the directors. Now getting to the, to the definition, pretty much, and I'm going to try to keep this quick. Um, military rate. Military rate, the tax rate that is applied to the assessed value of the taxable property to calculate the amount of property tax to be paid. Moving to the next one, military rate use of one meal is one dollar per thousand of the assessed value. So for calculation purposes, that is, for calculation purposes, the military rate is stated as point zero zero one. The military rate is established by the Levion Authority each year. And this comes to our next slide. This slide here is a notice of current tax digits in the five-year history of the levy. This compares, uh, last year to what the numbers we pulled off of the tax digits for this year, for twenty twenty-four to come up to up with, uh, military rate as well as the tax increase. In this particular case here, we only had a tax increase of, uh, one point five seven percent. That's about two hundred and forty-five dollars from last year. Um, last year was coming in at fifteen five ninety million. This year came in fifteen eight thirty-four, so it's just an increase of two, two hundred and forty-five, uh, thousand. Our military rate came in at point zero one seven six, but we're going to keep it at point zero one six seven, which is a sixteen point seven four. It gave us a difference of the let with the rollback of point zero 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 nine. And this slide came, this is what Mayor Pro Tim, uh, read out, this is what's going to be published for the tax tax increases by law that we need, we have to do this. Uh, this only states that, um, we're not changing the meal, the meal is going to stay the same. Finance, um, um, we are, uh, asking, um, City Council that the military state is same. Um, and only thing with the small increase of, uh, the tax, um, at one point five seven percent, we we ask that, uh, the military state is same at sixteen point seven four. That concludes, um, presentation for the military rate. Any questions?
Any question?
So the military rate is staying the same and what's increasing?
Uh, only thing that increased was the tax. We we got, we, uh, it shows if you go to the, um, the five-year history of the levy, it shows that we had an increase in tax. You can see up top with the real and property, we increase from last year to this year. Um, last year was nine, nine sixty-seven and this year is 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 one thousand thirty-two. So we we increased there. We also, um, went down in motor vehicles, uh, went down, went down a little bit in, uh, mobile homes. So basically, the increase came from, uh, real and personal property. So with that increase, only thing increase was the tax. So with that, we just keep the military same.
I'm from a James, if you will.
So the the property values.
Valuation of the properties increased.
And we didn't go up.
Yeah.
Alright, I got it.
Yes, ma'am. Which based upon state law, we have to, in fact, advertise it as a increase if there is no desire to. Which based upon state law, we have to in fact advertise it as a increase if there is no desire to leverage a rollback.
Right.
Okay, I got it.
So now we can make a motion to open a public hearing?
Yes. Um, so just before then, there will be ten minutes allocated for those in favor and ten minutes allocated to those that oppose. Do we have a motion to open a public hearing?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there, if there's anyone opposed to um the recommended military rate, can you please come to the podium? If there's anyone in favor to speak, could you please come to the podium? Being that there is not, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number three. Council approval on a blanket purchase order for Bennett. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
The consent agenda or the 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 um?
It's the consent agenda. So for the public hearings for the military rate, because it is a tax increase, we in fact have to have three public hearings.
Okay, got you.
This is just the first public hearing tonight.
Got you. I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda, Madam Pro Tem. Is there a second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council approval on a blanket purchase order for Bennett Fire Products. Okay, so confused right now. Okay, one moment. Okay, so new business. Item seven. Council approval on the conveyance of property at fifty-one twenty-three Springdale Drive.
Make a motion, we approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item eight, council approval on GMA pension plan agreement and adoption of ordinance.
So move.
There's all in favor?
Aye.
Council approval on the citywide operations and performal performance audit.
So approve.
There's a second.
Uh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council approval on the point system policy for public works employees. That item was removed and replaced with item number four on the consent agenda. Uh, council approval for the purchase of lawn care equipment. Is there a motion to approve? Any discussion?
Yes ma'am, Pro Tem. So my question had to do with um, do we have the required staff to run the um the equipment and do we have the place to store it?
So you'll recall, or this is a byproduct of a conversation within the last budget cycle where we in fact allocated four positions in recreation and leisure um for them to handle parts. Um, essentially, one of the things that we learned was the conversation then was for them to assist with the pocket parts or to take some of the workload off of public works. Um, recreation and leisure is now handling the pocket part citywide. And so because of that, we in fact um went through procurement, did an emergency procurement to get the necessary requisite equipment for the employees that we already have to use. So the employees are here and they're storing the equipment over at, or they will store the equipment over at recreation and leisure.
Yeah, that's all the questions I have.
So I have a question, but it may be more for public works. So my question is, I mean, I I know it's too separate, it it may can be for both of y'all. I know we're one city. Um, and it's two separate departments, but my question is, so we started buying equipment for public works. Um, from what I'm hearing from guys that don't even cut grass, so we're purchasing new equipment there that's not being utilized. Is no way that these two directors can come together and see what they can utilize versus just going to purchase all new equipment? Like we can't, they can't share.
I'll let staff answer that question. My understanding when we purchased this equipment was that there was no excess or recreation and leisure didn't have any equipment. So I'll let staff answer that question.
Yeah, we are currently now using, taking away from the equipment they currently have at public works. So we're purchasing, we're going out to purchase something so we don't have to take away and they don't, they can use the equipment that they pretty much shorthanded on to cut the grass around.
I'm not aware that we're short.
We're not shorthanded, no. Well, what we have right now, we are borrowing from the public works department.
Like a lo- a long story short, is I have, I had four lawnmowers in capital over the next three years to be replaced. I have two of them that's totally out of service, but we were able to make both departments work and function seamlessly until this year rolled around, thinking that it was gonna be some in this year's budget. Right now, we're still no crews down, but it is a chance that if another mo- uh lawnmower goes down, then we're gonna have to shut down a crew. Because I'm loaning, excuse me, uh, leisure is uh using uh the lawnmowers that we store down at public works.
Okay, I understand that, but I I'm just, I just know that public works has purchased new equipment for one of the departments in public works that's not being utilized, but maybe there's something for executive session. So thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Item number eleven, council approval on a task order to craft.
For?
For an order.
Yes ma'am.
I I wanna make a motion to approve the whatever it's called. What is it called?
Lawn care equipment.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number eleven, council approval on a task order for Croft to provide architecture renderings and three D animation services for Star Park.
Make a motion, we approve.
There a second?
Yes, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item twelve, council approval on a six-month strategic plan and the and authority board's update. Is there a motion to approve?
Exactly.
So it doesn't require a motion, does it? But we gotta make a motion.
We can get it ratified on the record that the plan was accepted and approved by this governing body. That way the record is solid.
All right.
So move. There a second?
I second.
Item thirteen, council approval of the allocation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in tax allocation district funds.
I think there there needs to be a vote. We had the motion by Councilwoman James, a second by council.
Yes, all in favor?
Gutierrez.
Aye, aye. All right.
Could you vote?
Council, item thirteen, council approval of the allocation of two hundred and fifty thousand in tax allocation district funds to support the stormwater infrastructure needs for the proposed Newtown home project on Main Street. Is there a motion to approve? Second?
I'll second, but I have conversation. So um, I I agree with using our TAD funds because I know what the out result, the outcome of the project is going to be. Um, however, I am a little bit frustrated by the something that happened in the past where we needed some TAD funds to help with stormwater and Clayton County Water Authority. Um, just want to put that out there, but I will be voting to approve this item.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Item fourteen, consent approval on the Second Street Park basketball court resurfacing contract. Chairman and Public Works Department.
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen, council approval on the Department of Planning and Community Development surplus surplus office furniture. Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we approve.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't think everybody voted. I guess I'd be Mayor Butler. Um, Councilwoman James?
Yes.
Deboz Antoine? Councilman Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilman Mears?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, item sixteen, council approval of a temporary easement for sidewalk improvements at seven ninety Lindaway Forest Park, Georgia. Is there a motion?
So move.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item seventeen, council approval of a temporary easement of sidewalk improvements at fifty-one eighty-five Ellen Street. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Councilwoman James?
Aye.
Antoine Deboz? Councilman Gutierrez?
Aye.
Councilman Mears?
Yes.
Thank you. Item eighteen, council approval on Minister Association's Day of Prayer. Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, please. Councilwoman James?
Before we vote?
Mm-hmm.
Staff added a condition to this item.
So I will amend my uh motion to approve this item with the recommendation of the insurance coverage.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Councilwoman James?
Yes.
Deboz Antoine? Councilman Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilman Mears?
Yes.
Item nineteen, council approval on the sixth annual youth empowerment summit. Is there a motion?
Is there a motion that we approve this item?
Oh, is there a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Closing comments by the governing body. Councilwoman James?
Thank you, everybody for coming out. Uh, make sure you go to the website and see the um ward meeting that I host every third Thursday of the month. We will be hosting again this month. Uh, also, um, the ward meeting, the block party that is hosted by our fabulous uh zoning, I always get the name wrong, uh community code enforcement, one of them departments. Uh, is is gonna be October the second in Ward One. So we're gonna look to get that information out. Uh, we always have a wonderful time with our department heads um and our staff uh leading that charge. Thank you so much for doing that. Um, also want to um bring to your attention and your remembrance. Uh, September twenty-eighth is gonna be a very, very, very busy day. Um, we will have our um annual five K fun run walk early in the morning. And then at three o'clock, we will have our um homecoming parade. Uh, we're already gearing up at the at the high school with our our court. Um, we wanna celebrate them uh as they parade um in the city. We're also inviting our elementary, middle and high f- elementary and middle schools to participate. Uh, we will convene uh or culminate, cul- culminate, whatever that word is, at the um amphitheater directly after um the parade to have a celebration on uh with the band performing with um different organizations performing and then we'll, that kinda kicks off the uh ultimate tailgate that's happening with the Georgia and Alabama game um for the ultimate tailgate sponsored by the Rex Department. So that's gonna be a fabulous day. So bring out your lawn chairs and your umbrellas and and everything and help us celebrate on that day. Um, and there's one other thing I can't remember. That's all I can think of right now.
Thank you. Deboz Antoine?
Thank you guys for coming out. God bless.
Councilman Gutierrez?
Thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tem. I just wanna say also you did great today. It's not easy to stand there and read the whole thing. The days like this, I appreciate our mayor as as much not funny that she is. Um, and so I'm even messing with her. She tries to be funny. Uh, we got our food truck Friday this Friday, so we're gonna be watching a movie, we're gonna be out there. Um, clean up the next day. Would love to see some people um come out and clean. I'm probably gonna be on Jonesboro Road. Uh, saw some spots that just need a little love. So um, yeah, just thank you, everybody for coming out. Um, shout out to our employees, just doing amazing. Welcome to the new police officer. Um, and yeah, uh, you you know, Elder Cook, if you can sneak in some prayers for our sports teams here. We uh, the Falcons haven't started yet and you know, our Hawks and the Braves, London United. We would appreciate that. And the Georgia Bulldogs. And our Forest Park Panthers, of course. They did, they beat Utopian though, which is a great academic school, by the way, here in Clean County.
Um, Councilman Mears?
Second.
Well, I got a couple accolades I want to. I had my block party last week and uh I wanna recognize Mr. Walker's team and the Public Work Division. Uh, Council aide, Ms. Dixon, all of these people incorporated and made it a real, real big success. Uh, I thought I had a pretty good party last year in another place, but we moved over to uh a newly renovated park with the new equipment and everything and the kids really loved it and uh I didn't like it too much because the slide's not real slick. I can't get down it much, but uh we all had a good time. Everybody showed up and and I'm proud to say that the people and staff and and everybody works together to make our job easier. And that's what counts is when you got a team effort and you can really tell it, little things that you don't think about happen. It don't happen, it just don't happen. It's gonna, you gotta have somebody to plug it in. And I think that we've got a real good working group here in Forest Park. And I just wanted to give a shout out to them and everybody that helps us try to do our job. Now, that's my accolade. I I gotta talk about Mr. Finch back there. He's my old member. Uh, I have to mention him every day. When when he uh passes on, bless his heart, I'll be the oldest person in here, but we uh, I'm glad to see him every time and I'm glad to see everybody here that comes and takes care of your business.
Councilman Gutierrez?
Thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tem. Yeah, I just wanna make sure that I let y'all know also, we have our second annual uh, it's not back to school, it's back in school because obviously school already started. I'm partnering up with Ms. Victoria Williams, one of our school board representatives. So uh, we'll be out at uh forty-six oh nine Jonesboro Road, just giving out school supplies and a lot of other different things that uh if any children might need, just come on out there. Uh, we'll have different information that the district has to offer as well as other resources from our city. So forty-six oh nine Jonesboro Road, it's in Ward Three, the most beautiful ward we have here in Forest Park. There's many, but that's just the top one. So um, if, please come out ten to two on Saturday.
Thank you, Councilman Gutierrez.
Madam.
I'm sorry.
I have one more thing. Okay, so I I wanted to publicly thank uh Mr. Jonathan, I see him in the audience, for the clear book bags um that he um gave to all of us actually, but I'm still giving them out at the high school. The kids are really appreciative of them. So I wanna thank you for that. And then I also want to remind everyone that I'm always looking for sponsors. We're gonna be celebrating all of our teachers of the years um for our Forest Park clusters um in January. So I'm looking for sponsors to give them a nice dinner. I would like to take them out to dinner as well as the principal and the parent liaisons of those schools. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Um, and Councilman Gutierrez, I do have, because I had some more book bags donated to me, um, that's just sitting at home. So I can give them to you all to donate as well. Um, and speaking of Mr. Finch, I just wanted to let you all know that our um Fall Community Garden Workday in the Willie Finch Community Garden will be Tuesday, September the seventeenth, from nine AM to one PM. Um, and the fly your reads, we're excited to invite you to our first workday at the Willie Finch Community Garden. Let's come together to make our garden a beautiful space for everyone to enjoy. The activities will include filling raised beds, planting new greenery, laying out the walkway, spreading mulch around, and your help will make a huge difference. And again, although this community garden that we're so grateful for. community garden that we're so grateful for, um, it's in Ward Four, but it's a community garden. And together we make the community, so it's open to everyone to come out. And again, lunch will be served and the address is fifty-four thirteen Lee Circle. Um, thank you all so much for coming out. And I do wanna piggyback off of what Councilwoman James said, and I think I've already thanked you all, but I just wanna thank you again, Jonathan Rashmir, for you all giving back to the kids of the Forest Park community. You all are greatly appreciated, so thank each of our directors, our employees, for everything that you do for our great city, and we will be entering into executive session. Um, so is there oh, for the purpose of personnel issues? Okay, um, is there a motion to enter, to close the regular meeting and enter into executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn Executive session and reconvene the regular meeting.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Where's our attorney?
Oh. All in favor?
Aye.
May I ask him, I'm sorry, who did you recognize for the second? I heard two things, I heard two.
Did I say?
I don't know.
I said, you said second, who did the second?
Who did the second?
I did, you did, oh.
Mayors.
You made the motion right.
Okay, I made the motion, yours made the second, okay.
She did, so yeah.
Okay.
Uh.
Uh, 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 okay. Um. Um. Mr. Clark, can you state the motion please?
Yes ma'am, Mayor, Pro team and members of the governing body to reflect the increase of scope and responsibilities, I am here recommending that this governing body effectuate a change of title for the procurement officer. And staff is seeking to upgrade this position to the procurement manager. As well as we are looking to change the procurement officer position to the assistant procurement agent. This change is budget neutral and results in a saving.
So move madam. President, I mean.
Don't call it president.
But, both of them.
Thank you. Bye. All of us. Oh, Mr. Clark, can he take the president name?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.